It's now, it's now 7:30 and this is, we're going to get started. This is the Worthington School District Board of Education meeting for October 10th, 2022. TJ, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Best.
Present.
Mrs. Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Hudson.
Present.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Present.
Mr. Wilson here.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome and good evening. As I said, this is the Worthington School District Regular Board of Education meeting. My name is Amy Lloyd and I get to serve as this year's Board President. To my far left is Board Member Kelly Davis, Board Member Jennifer Best, our treasurer TJ Kusick. To my far right is Board Vice President Charlie Wilson, Board Member Nikki Hudson, and our Assistant Superintendent Angie Adrianne, who is filling in for Dr. Bowers this evening. If you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item A2A, Approval of Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda of the Regular Board of Education meeting?
So.
You have lots of firsts there. Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, TJ, can you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries. So tonight, we have a Board of Education recognition. The Board of Education values the opportunity to publicly recognize staff and students for their service to this school district and the school community. We appreciate your attendance and ask that you remain seated through the duration of the recognition portion of the agenda. This is something that we haven't gotten to do for several years. So our first item is Board Recognition. So can I have a motion to recognize Megan Kirsten as Ohio's Assistant Principal of the Year?
So moved.
Second. You have lots of seconds. So everybody had, gave a second.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes. All right. Well, Megan, is this on? Okay. Megan, would you like to come up and join us for a minute? Oh, I forgot my. Hand this to you if you don't mind. So, "On behalf of the entire Worthington Schools' Board of Education, it is my pleasure to congratulate you," and I'm going to read this because "on being awarded as Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators, Ohio's Assistant Principal of the Year." And we just want to tell you that congratulations, first of all, and we're just excited to have someone recognized in the Worthington School District who is so deserving of this award. Yes, so I'm going to hand it off to Angie, who's going to say a few more things.
Absolutely. Okay, Megan, can you hold this too? All right. You got it both? So Megan, on behalf of the administrative team, I would just like to say congratulations. Having the honor of OASSA Assistant Principal of the Year is quite an honor. And I think I can attest to Principal Scully and Principal Curry, who've had the opportunity to work with Megan. Megan has served as Assistant Principal at Thomas Worthington High School and also now at McCord Middle School. Megan is the type of leader who rolls up her sleeves and gets the job done. No matter what the task, there isn't a challenge that Megan is afraid of. It's not about winning or losing. In Megan's case, she either wins or she learns. There's never a loss in her work. So it's winning or learning. We're honored that Megan chooses to work and learn in Worthington Schools, and we're really honored that she's a part of our team, and we want to congratulate her one more time for a prestigious honor. Congratulations. Yep.
Our next item is B1A, Visitor Comments. Our first speaker and only speaker this evening is Eric Farley. You can just come up to the podium here to give your comments.
Thank you. I.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just want to make sure. We need to have your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Eric Farley. I'm a Worthington resident since 2001. I live at 5960 Stewart Lane over in Lynnworth area behind the alternative school. I, I think that I sort of changed my plan on what I wanted to talk about when I saw the draft statement that was up there. Basically, I have a copy of the Brendan, of the State Board of Education member Brendan Shea's resolution, which is going to be, I guess, voted on, I think, on Wednesday. And I've read this over. I got a copy of this from a friend. I may not be in complete agreement with what's here. I think that there is a lot that I would say that I do agree with, but this is definitely, I would say, written from the standpoint of opponents of the Title IX changes that are under discussion. When I saw the draft statement today, when I came in, and I thank you for that, for being able to see a copy of this, I was somewhat surprised to see that it was really strongly in opposition to the Brendan Shea resolution. It's, there really seems to be a huge division here. It's like the Brendan Shea Division, Brendan Shea resolution is saying one thing, draft statement completely rejects it. And that, to me, seems troublesome. But as I read in here, read in the draft statement of the Worthington Board of Education, I see several things which, I guess, concern me. The first thing is the board is united in opposition to the, to this motion. I don't know what that means. Does that mean in completely in opposition to everything there? Is the board actually unified? All, every member is opposed to everything in this? Or is it something, you know, is there, is there some meeting ground in the middle? It's my opinion that an enormous number of parents in Worthington are going to be at least somewhat supportive of the Brendan Shea resolution. So to me, that says that the Board of Education may be out of step with many parents in Worthington. Not, maybe not the majority, I don't know. Haven't done a poll or anything, but it's, the draft statement seems to be quite a bit in opposition to where a lot of Worthington parents probably are. I am a Worthington parent. My son graduated years ago, but he did a number of years of grade school and high school in Worthington. He was a Thomas Worthington graduate, and he had great experiences. But I'll just set that aside. Looking further into the draft statement, as it goes down, it states that it includes false scientific assertions. I'm a scientist, retired scientist. I was a chemist, biologist, did a lot of things, because I worked at Chemical Abstract. So I saw a lot of different science, and I'm kind of a jack-of-all-trades in science. So I pick up any kind of science I want to and take a look at it, and I feel comfortable very broadly in science. There are scientific problems in the whole issue of sexuality, sexual identity, orientation, all of that. I get that. It's a complicated subject. The, but in terms of false scientific assertions, I'm very curious what those are, what was stated over here that might be, might be false. I'd just love to know what those things are. Harmful stereotypes, again, likes to hear specificity about that, to know more about that. Attempts to require a district to discriminate against or endanger LGBTQ students. The word danger is abused, frankly, in my opinion, in many cases, so I'd like to again know what that is. This type of resolution is morally reprehensible, politically charged. I will admit that it is a little political. I think that's, I thought that when I was looking at this. This is one side, basically. It seems to be very, this is very one-sided. But what I'm seeing here is also very reactionary to this. And so it's kind of, you know, there's a, there is, there's a little bit of politics both way. This is politically charged to the draft statement of the Worthington Board, in my opinion. Morally reprehensible. Now, that is kind of like, that's basically saying that a lot of parents in Worthington are morally reprehensible, and they're taking morally reprehensible side. So that's, that's not the Worthington that I live in. I love all my neighbors, whether they're progressive, conservative, they're all great people. So I don't think calling them morally reprehensible is, that's probably a little far. And targets a particular at-risk portion of our student population. I think all of our students are potentially at risk. One of the things which is, which concerns me is misidentification of trans students. That is a, I know of this to a certain extent because my son was almost misidentified as a gay student when he was in Worthington schools. And that was a, you know, it was, it was kind of fashionable at that time to start looking at, you know, who were potentially gay students. And my son is a somewhat gentle boy, and as things worked out, he, you know, as he grew older and went into puberty and all of this stuff later, he was a, he's now, I guess you could say he's cis and he has a girlfriend and he's probably not, he's living overseas and probably not coming back, unfortunately, but he's a great kid. And whether he was, you know, gay or not, that's a, you know, I would still love him. He's a, you know, but he was not gay. And so misidentification is a, is a problem, and that's where you get this Matt Walsh stuff, where this, you know, where this, you get these trans regret videos that everybody's seeing, and that's a, so I think that it's, it's a.
Mr. Farley.
There are lots of people who are at risk.
Mr. Farley, you've reached five minutes. If you could conclude your thoughts, please.
Okay, sure, sure. I just think that it would be very worthwhile to provide specifics about this in terms of what is wrong with the Brendan Shea's resolution. And perhaps, I, I think that the rest of this here is, you know, kind of good boilerplate, so I don't really have much issue with that. But I think the second paragraph, what are these specifically that are in here, and maybe the language is morally reprehensible, I don't think that's good language. So anyway, thank you very much for listening to me.
That concludes our visitor comments for this evening. Our next item is B1B, State Board of Education Proposed Resolution Discussion. So everybody should have a copy or either paper or digital copy of the draft statement that Nikki has worked on to draft for us. I don't know, Nikki, if you want to lead off with any comments maybe you've received or?
No, I didn't receive any comments. I just wanted to follow up on my email from yesterday. So the last sentence talks about remaining members, which is not accurate. It was only Collins, Johnson, Miranda, and Newman who made that statement. So I made sure you all had that. And if we want to keep that in there, then we should obviously clarify that. And then I would just open it up for comments.
Okay. Does anybody want to start with any comments? Charlie, do you have comments?
Yeah, I believe that the statement was very well done, and just so that there is no misunderstanding with respect to the incorrect scientific assertions and harmful stereotypes that are repeated in Member Shea's resolution, I'd just like to identify two. First of all, there are assertions in his resolution that suggest that transgender girls are predatory, and I think that's an extraordinarily harmful stereotype. And secondly, there is the assertion in the, in Board Member Shea's resolution that gender-affirming care is medically harmful. And I think, as we all know, the science is quite clear that it is not, and in fact, it's highly recommended by the Academy of Pediatric Doctors. But I do want to, if it's appropriate, if in fact that our speaker's son was identified as gay, I'll be honest with you, I find that morally reprehensible. No staff, no student, no one should be identifying anybody as gay or trans, transgender. That should be done by the student and/or family itself. What?
Or heterosexual.
Or heterosexual, yeah. One should not be. We should not be in the business of identifying anybody's sexual orientation or gender identity. And I, I just felt compelled to make that statement.
Anyone else?
I can go. I just had a couple of small changes. Thank you for drafting this, too, by the way, taking the time. In the first paragraph and in the beginning of the second paragraph, you refer to the state school board member. And my suggestion maybe would be just to say this resolution and this proposed resolution as opposed to the school board member's name, because what we are addressing is the resolution itself. So that's just my thought regarding that. In the third paragraph at the bottom, the last sentence, you have see them and value them and see and value as in quotation marks. And I was just curious as to why.
It was that way, it was stated that way, and the last statement that we issued regarding 616, so I just pulled that from there. I'm completely fine with removing the quotations.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would, can we add here in that as well, as just a suggestion, that is the language that we use just as a district?
Yeah.
That we see here and value are all of our students.
I'm comfortable with that personally.
I did catch that it was the four, there were four members of the State Board of Education that opposed the resolution and made a statement regarding that.
Maybe we just modify, if we choose to keep that sentence in there, Kelly, that we just modify that we appreciate the members of the State Board of Education that issued a statement against this type of.
And I, I would, lastly, I would propose that we switch those last two, two sentences of that last paragraph. I think that the first sentence is actually just kind of brings it all together.
It does. I would be comfortable with that. So we will change then, we would change the last sentence to state, "We appreciate the members of the State Board of Education that issued a statement against this type of politically charged divisive action," and then finish with that, what was otherwise the first sentence. Okay, I'm just trying to make a quick note.
And just small, like we say, it says politically charged twice, which.
I don't.
I always try to find something different, but I just thought maybe in the discussion we could talk about that.
Absolutely, I'm open to.
But thank you. I see, I looked at other statements as well and see that this aligns with a lot of the statements that have already been issued, so.
Does anybody else have any thoughts they want to share?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
On, well, what's the last sentence in this that might get changed to the second, to the last, about the State Board of Education and the, and the four members' statement? What, one of the things I really liked about their statement is that we could say we agree with the State Board of Edu, that the State Board of Education should be spending their time making sure children are receiving the best learning opportunities available. You know, the State Board of Education should not be spending their time on these divisive issues. They need to be spending their time on how are we going to teach children to read and bring the STEM programs? And, you know, I, I would, I would like to see that. And the other thing, since I obviously have an issue with this stepping on our local control, at the end of the second paragraph, something that was in the four-member statement says this type of resolution undermines Ohio's proud history of local control, like that part, too.
So would you propose, Jennifer, to add that to the sentence that will now be our last one, where we talk about stripping us from our local control?
Yeah, now that you flip that around, yeah, that's probably a good place for it.
It's already, I mean, but, so what would you, what language do you want to add to that sentence? Just how they worded it, maybe you can restate that. So right now, it says, "which," should say attempts, not attempt, "attempts to strip us, strip us from our local control and would endanger our students."
Yeah, because I've really got that sentence up at the top because it's somewhat repetitive. I, I liked that that sentence specifically referred to, you know, that type of resolution undermines our proud history of local control.
Where would you like that?
So that's why I had, I just suggested that at the end of the second paragraph. So that's why I had, I just suggested that at the end of the second paragraph. Because that's where it's talking about Shea's resolution.
So you would propose that state, this type of resolution is morally reprehensible, politically charged, commas, take out the and there, targets a particularly at-risk portion of our student population, and?
And undermine, yeah.
Say that again, please.
And undermines Ohio's proud history of local control.
Would you then propose that we take that out of the, what will now be the second sentence of the final paragraph? And so instead, it will just state, we join neighboring boards of education and employing our state board to vote down this resolution on others like it, period. That way, we're not repetitive from the local control standpoint.
I'm okay with being repetitive because I think it's so important.
Well, but let's go back to, did we want that sentence to be the last sentence? Or no?
That was what Kelly proposed.
Because I, oh, because I kind of like that.
That was just my proposal.
Yeah, but that's, that's, and that's fine. So we'll, we'll, we'll keep that repetitive portion in there because we are comfortable with emphasizing that part. And that will be our last sentence. So the final paragraph, I think, per our edits reads, and, give me a second on that sentence where it references the remaining, because maybe we just put the four members' statement instead of remaining.
Yeah, I would put remaining because there are.
Well, no, 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 no. We, yeah, we know we have to change remaining, but I was like switching it all around. And I'm wondering if there's a more simple way to edit it.
Oh, just by changing out remaining for four.
Four, exactly. So we could state, we appreciate the State Board of Education, four members' statement against this type of politically charged divisive action. We join neighboring boards of education and employing our state board to vote down this resolution and others like it, which attempts, plural there, to strip us from our local control and would endanger our students.
Would it be better, sorry, small, we appreciate the four State Board of Education, of Education members' statement?
You just said of?
As opposed, so you said, we appreciate the State Board of Education's four members' statement. And I'm saying, should we put the word for, where we appreciate?
The four, yeah, the four State Board of Education.
Right there.
Yes, there should, thank you. Members, so yeah. So we appreciate the four State Board of Education members' statement.
Yes.
Perfect. And then there's, yeah, that's much easier than where we were at first. Amy, do you want to share your comments? And then I can summarize where we are with all of this for everyone?
Well, I just have one clarification on Jennifer's comment about, about what we think the State Board of Education should be focusing their work on. Do?
Oh, yeah, I did not put that in here. Thank you.
Okay.
Where were you proposing that, Jennifer?
I had that at the end. When, when you say that we appreciate the four members' statement, I had it after that, just to clarify a little bit about what their statement was.
I think that makes sense.
That does make sense.
And then that last sentence is the end.
The we join.
We join, yeah.
Jennifer, I hate to ask you to say this again, but will you tell me again that portion? I can, I can pull it up. I mean, I just, I send it to all of you.
It's okay. We, we agree the State Board of Education should be spending time making sure children are receiving the best learning opportunities available. Now, their resolution goes on for a whole paragraph about what those opportunities are.
I like it. Just, yeah, but yes, the best wording opportunity. You don't have to go with the illiteracy.
So it would be.
Carry on for, yeah.
And I think because we're referencing their statement, that makes sense to just say that sentence of, of why we're referencing them.
I would kind of preface it, we believe the State Board of Education should be spending its time making sure all children are receiving the best learning opportunities. That's our, as a board, our unified.
So the only difference between where you two are is that Jennifer's emphasizing the fact that we agree. So we're talking about it in the context of the statement. And so may I suggest we stay with the we agree portion of it just to, okay. So it would be, we appreciate the four State Board of Education members' statement against this type of politically charged divisive, divisive action, and agree that the State Board of Education should be spending time making the best learning opportunities available.
Yeah, which is what I just handed you and had a little.
Thank you.
Heart next to that.
Thank you.
At this point, I don't know that I have any more further, any further comments. I appreciate you working on this. Nikki, I appreciate your comments at the beginning of our discussion. Charlie, I appreciate your comments, Kelly, and yours, Jennifer, as well. So I think we're getting to a really good place. So I don't know if we want to read through it to make sure.
I think that what, what I will do, I can either read through the whole thing, or I could just highlight the portions that we've changed. It's however you guys wish. And then we'll know, we'll all have in front of us then, if you can make notes as to where we landed, and then we can vote on it. Is that good?
Yeah.
So in the first.
I'm going to ask a question because it's not in our agenda that we're voting on it. That was my next question. Like, what, what is the purpose of this statement and what are we going to do with it?
Yeah. So I assume, Amy, you can take that. I mean, unless you want me to take it.
So, well, I don't, we can both, and if I don't cover it, I guess. So where we landed was, since it's a statement, we do, we wouldn't need to vote on it. We just wanted to agree that we were all making this statement. And then I have registered to go down and speak at the State Board of Education meeting on Wednesday morning. I'm the 65th speaker. So hopefully I will get my three minutes. But, I mean, that's the initial plan. And I guess then we can talk about from there, how we would like to issue this statement. I don't know if you want to.
No, you, you hit on it. I think if it was a resolution, we would need to vote on it because it's a statement. We don't need to. We wanted to take the time to work on it, align on it, and make sure that we're all comfortable with it. And then exactly as Amy said, she's going to read it on our behalf. And I don't, I, I agree that it's open as to beyond that, do we want to publicly issue it prior to the meeting? Or do you want to state it at the meeting and then that we would publicly issue it? I don't feel strongly one or the other.
Given that they may vote on Wednesday, I would urge us to get it publicly available on our website as soon as possible.
So then theoretically, we could publish it tomorrow and you could share it in person on Wednesday. And thank you, Amy, for representing us in that manner.
Sure. Yeah, I think that sounds like a good plan. Everybody okay with that? Publishing? Is that something you can?
Sure. Okay. So to summarize, we've got our draft in front of us. We've changed the reference in the first paragraph to this resolution. It visually appears as like the four sentence down, but it's, it's actually the beginning of the second sentence. So it'll state, this resolution is in response to. The second paragraph will again start with, this res, this proposed resolution includes all scientific assertions. And then we'll end with a sentence that says, this type of resolution is morally reprehensible, politically charged, and targets a particularly ask, no, excuse me, targets a particularly at-risk portion of our student population, and undermines Ohio's proud history of local control, period. The third paragraph ends with, Worthington is a school district that is deeply committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, to creating a culture of acceptance, and that celebrates and empowers differences. Sorry, I didn't realize I was one more down. We want every student to know that we, no quotes, see, hear, and value them. Okay? The final paragraph is the one where we had the most change. So please make sure that I capture this accurately. We appreciate the four State Board of Education members' statement against this type of politically charged divisive action. And we agree that the State Board of Education should be spending time making the best learning opportunities available, period. We join neighboring boards of education and employing our state board to vote down this resolution and others like it, which attempts to strip us from our local control and would endanger our students, period. Good?
Yeah, but I did change the proposition there from, from, uh.
Which one?
Strip us of, which attempt to strip us, which attempts.
To strip us of, you're correct.
Our local control.
Thank you. Thank you. Good? Okay. I will send a clean version of this to you tonight, Angie.
Can you CC me?
Absolutely.
It wouldn't be bad to see.
I'll just see, I'll just CC the whole board. Then everyone has a clean copy of it.
Okay.
Good?
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, our next item is item B1C, Board Committee Reports and Announcements. Would anyone like to go first?
Sure. I'm glad to share that we had a policy committee meeting last Friday. Very productive, was it last Friday or the Friday before?
Last Friday.
Okay, thank you. No, it was the Friday before.
Last Friday.
Last Friday? It's, isn't that sad? They all blend together. It was on a Friday. We went through a lot of the standard policy updates that we've received from Niola, in addition to our Title I policies, which we are required to review annually. And I think that Randy emailed everyone. We will have some revised policies to propose to the board at, for our first reading at our next meeting.
Yeah. Let's see, on September 27th, Kelly and I attended the academic achievement meeting in the afternoon here. And, let's see, Angie, Neil, Rob, was there somebody else in the room?
And Kelly.
And Kelly, yeah, Kelly Waggily, did a great job of, of explaining especially lots of things to us, including lots of acronyms. And so that was, what I, what I took away from it was a number of things, but the importance of respect, responsibility, relationships, repair, and reintegrate back into the classroom community, and be curious, not furious, when a, a student acts in what someone believes is an inappropriate way. Then on October 5th, following up on that a week later, a little over a week later, we had our Curriculum Liaison Committee meeting. And that was truly an awesome experience. A lot of great things. There's a ton of, one of the things that came out of it was what the Curriculum Liaison Committee, Council, I'm sorry, Curriculum Liaison Council wants to know about. And they had a list of really great ideas. I don't know how you could possibly get through them without meeting at least weekly, if not daily. But also a great discussion of Math III and Algebra II, where Math III fits in with Algebra II, and the possibilities of adding alternative courses for Math III. And I guess I just want to get in, because I was very careful not to speak at the meeting, because it was a chance for the liaisons to speak and hear from them. But now I will speak, which is, I really hope we get statistics and probability. I know it was low on the survey, but I'm not sure all students knew what statistics and probability were, and especially the opportunity to make that a truly interesting class. And I think it's critical for our students, our graduates, to, in order to be informed, engaged citizens, and informed and knowledgeable voters, to understand statistics and probabilities, so that, as those get thrown around. A very good discussion of the leadership retreat that the leadership went on and the board goals, the, the different, I think, the liaison members really appreciated the, the understanding of the board goals, the state strategic plan, the Ohio Improvement Plan, and each school's continuous improvement plan, the CIP, to use the, the acronym. And then finally, and actually, in my opinion, although all those three were great, the table talk, at least at our table. I can only speak for our table, Kelly, Kelly was at our table. But it was enormously beneficial to hear from parents from around the district. And I came away with it. I was glad that they endorsed and felt that what we really should be doing here is making sure every child, every child is life-ready. And for different children, that's going to be something different. You know, some, it's includes being college-ready, for some includes being career-ready. But for every one of our students, it's being life-ready, wherever that student is. We've got to make sure each of our graduates is life-ready. So great, okay. Then, late, very late, I'm going to leave it to Jennifer, at the very same time, the Treasurer's Advisory Committee was meeting. And I immediately, as soon as the, the Curriculum Liaison Council meeting ended, I turned to that, but it was late in that. And I'm, actually, what little I heard was very good. But I won't come in on. And then on October 6th, Amy and I attended the facilities meeting. And I've got a whole bunch of notes on that. It was an outstanding meeting again, which frankly, it ran a little over two hours, or maybe more than, almost three, yeah, three hours. And we got about halfway through the stuff we wanted to get through. It was a, a great meeting, everything from, with, well, we focused on a lot of things, but certainly the fieldhouse project at Thomas Worthington and at Kill, Worthington Kilburn High School were discussed, the phasing planning, great discussion of that, a very good discussion of the Naterium, and what we're going to do about that, given the cost of it and the amount we have budgeted for that. It's an issue that we as a board are going to have to deal with at some point. Good discussion of the safer house to school update. And the, and we actually got a tour of this building. I guess I just want to say this, this building is a really important and valuable asset to this district. And the notion of deferring or not doing maintenance on this building, in my opinion, is not even penny-wise, but certainly pound foolish. We've got a great asset here, and we got to, we've got to make sure we take care of it. I know it's going to be expensive. I know that we, as a board, I believe, I don't want to speak for the other four of you, and as a district, we really want to put all the money we can into our learning buildings, but we've got to take care of all our assets. And I think, I hope there's agreement on that. And I know it's not always politically popular to put money into the administration building. But this is an asset that we've invested in. And as, as anybody who's a homeowner knows, sometimes you've got to spend money to make your asset last longer and to make it more valuable. So that I, I really think is important. The, while there is some need to do some work in this building, the important thing is, it's, it's strong and sturdy. The pillars are in good shape. They're not collapsing. We've got portions that are, you know, have shown some wear and was, the earth has shifted. But it's a strong building, so we're in no danger here. I wouldn't be here, frankly, as, if I thought there was any danger. But anyway, it was a very good meeting. And I'll let Amy add to that.
Can I ask either one of you to share more on the safe routes to school update?
Go ahead.
So we, I guess I'll just, we didn't talk about this at this facility meeting, but just so everybody's aware, refresh your memory. So we, we do have a couple of safe routes to school projects that we've partnered with. One is a path, a multi-use path along Snoffler Road that is, was actually paved last Friday. Yeah, it was really exciting. And I actually saw somebody in a wheelchair using it when I was driving on Snoffler. If I wasn't driving, I would have taken a picture, because I just thought that was great. That's the purpose of that connection piece that we have. So that was a partnership with Franklin County Engineer, Perry Township, the school district, to get that path in place. And then there are some other projects that have already been submitted for safe routes to school at Brookside and Worthington Hills Elementary's that are also partnerships with Perry Township to get those going. So what they shared with us this past week was that there is some information that's going to be going out, some survey information related to the Perry Phoenix Building, to try to understand how I think the pedestrian access there. And, and I think there's going to be looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's going to be looking at the City of Worthington's plan as well. of Worthington's plan as well, and kind of cross-referencing what some of the high priority paths were there. I know one of them is for, from the city's bike and pedestrian plan, is a path connecting across the front of the Perry property, because as it exists right now, there's the multi-use path, and there's a sidewalk on the other side, but there's no connection. So, I mean, I've seen people walking up onto the Perry property during the school day because it's the only way to get through that section. And so I know they're just starting that process to kind of see where we want to go with that, and then hopefully first of middle, Tim, correct, this next February, March. Yeah. So that's kind of where that process is right now.
Thank you. That's helpful.
May I do a real quick addendum? I remember now where I came in on the Treasurer's Advisory Committee, and I'll let, it was an excellent discussion of school funding, and I think it was Mr. Browning that was, did a really good job, and it was a good discussion, and something we need to figure out some way to get out to the community. He really did a very good job of presenting how school funding works in Ohio in general, so.
Great.
Okay, you want me to go? And I'll kind of follow up on Charlie's comment. The Treasurer Advisory Committee last week, I appreciate TJ and the new members. We had several new members at that meeting, and we went over school funding and our finances and changes to the forecast that we will see at our next meeting. Is that correct?
November.
In November meeting. But like what, so what I really appreciated about the meeting with the new members is they had really done their homework, they had studied the financial statements, and they had great questions. So I think it'll be a really good group moving forward as we look at things and have to make decisions that they're working really hard to understand and learn. So that was a good meeting. Communication Committee met, and we got to talk with Cory over here about our meetings and the sound and the...
Thank you for that, Jennifer. Sorry, I forgot to talk about that one.
Well, I started thinking, maybe that was several weeks ago.
It was, I just forgot. Yeah. All my weeks are blending together.
It was a great meeting, and he's got some new things set up tonight. We hope people can hear us better. We hope on the video of the meeting that they may be able to see us a little better. So that was another good meeting. And then the third thing I want to talk about is we had a student advisory meeting at Linworth Alternative School today, and it was great. We probably had 20-ish students there, and almost every student spoke, which isn't typical in a group like that. And we talked about school start times, which they all like, of course, the later start time. And some of the things they talked about that we hadn't really thought about was one of the girls works till 10 o'clock every night, so it's helping her get enough sleep when she gets home from work. One of the girls helps her mom get her younger siblings to school now that she's home. So we heard lots of good benefits, along with being ready to start the day when they get to school because they've had enough sleep. And the only negative we heard was that their lunch period has been shortened to make up for it, and especially at Linworth where they often have to go out to get their food since there's no cafeteria. But they'd give up the lunchtime in a heartbeat to have that extra sleeping time. You know, and they talked about how much they love their school, of course, and the inclusiveness and the variety of classes, and how they kind of own their own schedule. And so it was really good, and I'm really glad that we've gotten to start meeting with the students again. I know we all think that's one of the best parts, so it was great. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Anything? No?
I just echo what Charlie said, echo what Nikki said. I did, I also enjoyed the policy meeting. You know, I'm learning as I'm going, and so just getting more comfortable with looking at our policies and looking at what Neola recommends and all of our, just the amount of administration help that we need, like Randy's feedback, and we have Neil's feedback, and, you know, different feedback that we get from the administration. So, you know, it's nice to be reminded that it's not just us sitting at a table making decisions. We definitely reach in and connect with people and connect with our administrators and our principals and our teachers to make sure that the decisions that we're making at the table fit with our district, which is good. So I like that. I always love the APL meetings, and I just learned so much about what's happening in our schools. I think that you all should look at, reach out to Angie, sorry, Angie, about the continuous improvement plan and what they're doing, what they're doing, great work in reaching goals and making goals and connecting with the Ohio Department of Education, and making sure that they're aligned with the standards that the Ohio Department of Education has laid out. And so, you know, they're really working together. She had a color-coded, like red and blue equals purple, loved it. I'm very visual, so that was very helpful to me. But I do think that, that information to see what's happening in our schools, how our buildings are working together to help develop our students, and so that was just really helpful information. So I just recommend that you reach out to Angie with that. And, oh, I did not have a meeting with Worthington Education Foundation, but a representative did reach out to me, so they're trying to revamp their organization, and so they have put together kindergarten boxes to deliver to teachers. So they had a lot of volunteers to help with that, and are sending those out to all the buildings around the districts to the kindergarten teachers. So they're moving right along to get their recognition back out there because it's such a beneficial thing to our staff and our teachers. So that's all I have.
Did you have something you wanted to add, or?
I'm just going to add that you sparked a memory, Kelly, that during my first term, I remember I felt at different times that we did this and then we didn't do this, where we could on our Google, on our Google Drive, save documents that we feel like everyone else on the board should have access to. So when you attend a particular committee, we could create, you know, just a folder on that committee, and then not only would we have access to it after you've spoken about it at a meeting and alerted us to, hey, go check this out, we're saving the fact that we don't have to circle back to someone at the administration and have them pass it out to everyone else. And it also could create some kind of a historical information there for us as a board. So, Amy, I feel like you've done a really great job of directing us all to use the calendar that's on the Google Drive, right, or that's how we're connected on Google. So I guess I will take it upon myself on the committees that I'm on, that if there are things that I can put into a folder and put out there and accessible, I will do that, and would just encourage others to do the same. And then we can reevaluate maybe at our next work session as to whether or not we feel like it's working, should we do something else, do we think it's valuable? But at least give it a try again as a means by which we share actual documents from the work that we're doing respectively on behalf of all of us.
I think that's a great idea, if we can figure out how to navigate that, to put it all into one, yeah, okay. We can talk about that, figure out, okay, logistics of it. Okay. That sounds great. Well, I don't really have anything further to add. I did attend the facilities meeting with Charlie. I was going to bring up just about the Safe Routes to School and that that path got paved, but I already did that. So I just thought that was exciting, that connection piece for our students and for our community members. As Jennifer mentioned, her and I filled, or attended the Linworth Feedback Session this morning, which was great. Yeah, they were just so positive about everything and gave us great feedback, and I agree, it's great to be able to have the student feedback sessions. I only experienced them just at the very beginning of my term because obviously then the pandemic happened, but it's great to be back having those. And I know we have quite a few of those coming up here in the next few months, so we should all be able, those of us who haven't attended yet will be able to.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
I was supposed to attend one in November.
Okay.
For the 17th, but that's the day that we're having our work session, so was that rescheduled? Or is it still supposed to be rescheduled?
I think it's...
Not yet.
To be rescheduled, but I don't know, Nikki, do we...
Trent.
Okay.
Yeah, Trent brought it up today. He knows.
Okay.
That it's an issue, and he hasn't rescheduled yet.
And I had, I had brought it up as well. I just, yeah, I think it needs to get rescheduled, yeah. Is that one at Worthington Kilborn, or I don't remember? Or is it Thomas? Okay. Okay. So we'll hear more about that soon, then I'm assuming. Okay, great. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for sharing. All right, actions recommended by the Treasurer. Item C1A, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 26, 2022 regular board meeting as indicated in enclosure C1A?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, TJ, can you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C1B, appropriation transfers, modifications. Can I have a motion to authorize the following appropriation transfers, modifications, as presented by the Treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? TJ, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Do you please call for the vote?
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Motion carries. Actions recommended by the Superintendent, routine business.
Ms. Adrian.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda, item C2A through C2G. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the Consent Agenda means that all items listed under the Consent Agenda are adopted by one single motion, unless a member of the Board or the Superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the Consent Agenda and vote upon separately. Once again, that's item C2A through C2G, and I believe that takes you to the middle of page 15.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess, because a question already has arisen, one person contacted me. I want to be very clear that on page 15, when we're talking about those amounts for the various WEA positions, that's all, we're reimbursed for that. That flows through from WEA. There's less, there's no public monies, no school district monies involved in that.
Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. I think it says it there, but it's kind of hidden that it is funded by the WEA. It's on the page before, so it's...
It's split from the actual...
Yeah.
Somebody called me over the weekend, told, I assured them it's not our money.
Yeah.
But legally, we have to do it this way.
Yes. Any other discussion items? TJ, can you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Actions recommended by the Superintendent, new business.
Yes, I'd like to recommend to accept the donations for the individuals and organizations listed below, and to extend the Board of Education and administration's appreciation to the individuals and members of these groups for their generosity and support.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? TJ, can you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Motion carries. Requests, questions, and concerns from the Board. Does anybody have anything that they want to share? No? Anybody down here? All right, looking ahead at our calendar, our next meeting is October 24th at our typical 7:30 PM, and then we have a November 16th meeting, which is on the Wednesday, which is the week of OSBA, the OSBA conference. So just make sure we all have that noted on our calendar because it caught me, again, by surprise the other day. So, and then we have our work session on November 17th, starting at 9:00 AM. So we'll have those two back-to-back. And I apologize because I wasn't, when we pulled all those dates, I wasn't really looking at those two being back-to-back until...
If you see it like this.
Yeah.
And remind me on the 17th, is it like from 9:00 to noon or 1:00?
9:00 to 1:00.
Yeah, I think it's probably going to be at least three hours. I said 9:00 to 1:00.
To 1:00, yeah.
Just to give us a little extra time in case we need it, just so everybody would have that time blocked on their calendars, so hopefully that works for everybody. I mean, obviously, if we go way over, then we may need to talk about rescheduling another session at another date, so. All right. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment, dismissal, appointment, promotion, demotion, compensation, or investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries. There will be no further business of the Board after executive session. Thank you again for joining us this evening. We appreciate you being here.